Good evening. Welcome to the Oland Tange Local Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting. This is a business session. It is Thursday, June 8th, 2017 at 6:00 PM. We're in the Oland Tange Administrative Offices, the Berlin Room. With that, Mrs. Hatfield, you call the roll.
Mrs. Speesel?
Yes, here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. Bartz?
Here. You all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Any changes? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Speesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes. Going to present the Board President's Report. If you'll bear with me for a few minutes, I have a couple of things. First of all, happy summer to staff and kids. I think we all remember what a great time that was, except for our parents when we were home all the time. Congrats to the class of seventeen. It was a great day of graduation for our kids. Next year, the class of eighteen is at the Schottenstein Center. Is that correct, Mr. Wright?
Yep.
So we will have a whole new venue to address everything there. And tied to that, I really wanted to thank the staff and teachers for all the efforts, principals and such, to get those things pulled off. And it's an assembly line. It's very efficient, and they did a great job. So I also wanted to thank Mr. Rafe, who spent some time again this week at the State House, providing testimony around fair school funding. We all are very aware of the state budget revenue issues this year. And Mr. Rafe, along with other fellow districts lawmakers and support staff, are doing their best to continue to remind our governor that educational funding should never be part of a Budget Balancing Act. The investment in education, especially our investment in fair funding, is really at the foundation of the future of this state. And to think of it any other way is just not right. So thanks, Mr. Rafe. We appreciate that investment you're making with that time. In our Board Action Items tonight, we have several things. Two of those, we have cost of living raises for Mr. Rafe and Mrs. Hatfield. As you know, the Superintendent and the Treasurer are the only two employees that the Board hires and directs. And by a higher revised code, it needs to be handled this way in the agenda. We also, or I wanted to let you know that the Board of Education has begun negotiation of a contract extension for Mr. Rafe, and we will keep everyone posted on the progress of that. With that, are there any other questions or any other comments by the Board? Hearing none. Mr. Rafe?
I'd also like to welcome Kevin Vangeloff, who's the President of our Bus Drivers Association, as a special guest. We have a couple other special guests in the back. Some of my students who are part of a Superintendent's cohort, administrators working on their administrative license. So one of their assignments is to write a reflection on a board meeting that they attend. So welcome class. We also have Mr. Weaver joining us, who is on the agenda for approval as the new Athletic Director at Orange High School. All right. With that, start off again with some good things. As Mr. Bartz just had mentioned, we graduated 1,281 students on Sunday. Thank you to all the Board members for participating in that. It really, I got a lot of positive comments from community members, and they were all very appreciative of your attendance and understanding of what a long day it was and a lot of hands to shake. So that was, it just was a great day, though. That being said, next year, we're right now on target to welcome 1,374 incoming kindergarteners to replace those 1,281 seniors. So you see that little uptick in growth. We'll also have additional growth in other areas. And next year's ninth grade class will be the biggest in the history of the district, 1,641 new high school students. But that will quickly be surpassed by the eighth grade class and the seventh grade class that are both over 1,700. So growth is not slowing down. Moving on, this last weekend, we had state-level competitions. Hunter Moore from Orange High School is the first individual boys' state champion at Orange High School. He posted a time that was in the top ten best times for the 3,200 meters in the state history. So congratulations to Hunter. Interestingly, I assume he lives in, well, obviously in the Orange Attendants area, which is south of Orange Road. I was driving one day on Cheshire Road, flipping along about 50 miles an hour, and I looked off to the side and I passed Hunter. I mean-
There he is, running up there.
He's running mi- so that, he put miles and miles and miles on. Other noteworthy track and field performers, Jaden Rogers at Orange High School placed second in the 110 high hurdles. Anna Watson was second in the pole vault. She was, she lost in a jump-off. She would've been a back-to-back state champion. OHS senior Kyle Brookshire was second in the boys' pole vault. And I don't know if you followed it over the years, but we've had consistently-
Yes.
-great performances out of pole vaulters, so. And the Orange Boys Track and Field Team finished fourth in the state, best in the school history. So they had a great, great spring season. Boys Lacrosse at Liberty High School was in the state semifinals, and then the Orange Baseball Team was in the state semifinals. So congratulations to both of those teams on making it to the final four. I'm not sure Mr. Myers recovered from his son's, from the Liberty Team losing in the state semifinals. He still recaps it daily in the office. Should've, would've, could've, right, Todd? So we had two siblings, Sackett and Satvik Pokaraju, who competed in an International Geography B. And interestingly, this isn't something we had had before, and their parents brought it to the principal at Meadows when, I want to say Sackett, was in fourth grade, and they started competing in these competitions and have done very well. They won the International Geography B U.S. Championship in the middle school and elementary school categories. The brothers will now have the chance to represent the United States when they compete in the IGB World Championships held in Berlin. So that's a great accomplishment for both those young people. I'm sure, just like the International Spelling Bee that's being held on ESPN, someday the International Geography Bee will be on ESPN, hopefully by the time those two get in high school. So we had a great donation from TRC. Thank you from Mr. Bartz for facilitating that donation of lab equipment to Oland Tange Academy. I know they're very, very pleased with the haul of goods, so.
It was a lot of stuff.
Appreciate you thinking of us when your company had an opportunity to donate that. So thank you very much. Our curriculum team held their fourth, third annual think tank. We had more than 300 staff members participate from May 31st to June 1st. Most of the presenters are our own staff members, sharing the good work they do. The theme this year was collective brilliance, and it was focused on collaboration and efforts to instill that in their classrooms. So it's a good kickoff to the summer. Give you a quick update on the conversion at Shanahan to preschool space. Demolition is moving along. Demolition is completed. Construction's beginning. This is actually, the picture on the right is actually the old Superintendent's suite. So pretty soon it'll have preschool children running around inside of it. So that'll be much better than the past. Couple, discussion, or just one discussion item on the agenda today. Mr. Runyon and Mr. O'Sullivan will be giving an update on the Berlin High School construction. So I'll leave it at that. It's just moving right along. I drive by almost every day and just amazed at how the progress of the project. We have numerous Board Action Items on the agenda. We have for approval the collective bargaining agreements with our Opsy Local 39 and Opsy Local 322, our bus drivers and our custodians, maintenance and field service. We have salary, cost of living salary increases for the non-union classified, which are our secretaries, our food service workers, and our aides are all part of the non-union classified groups. We also have administrative salary increases, cost of living salary increases as a Board Action Item. We have two new administrative appointments. Steven Peters is going to be joining us as the Assistant Principal of Glen Oak. He's coming from Charlottesville, Virginia. And Brian, it's the last time I'm going to say Brian, Buck Weaver, is the Athletic Director, will be the new Athletic Director at Orange High School. And then finally, our next two Board Meetings. I want to remind everybody, the June 22nd Board Meeting will be back at Oland Tange High School because we'll be doing our second round of student recognition for the spring sports that weren't in prior to our last meeting. And then July 6th is a Board Session. They'll be back here. So with that, any questions?
I read the papers. It was vandalism at Berlin High School.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yes. We had two students who made a poor choice, jumped the fence, did a little spray painting on, and that happened actually before commencement. So they-
Is that covered? Church, who covers that?
The average case, that makes more than $25,000 dollars, and the rest is a contract. We're working to keep that forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rafe? Thank you. Mrs. Hatfield, Treasurer's Report, please.
So good evening, everybody. We wanted to give you an update on what our office is working on at this time of year. As you know, we passed the five-year forecast at the May 18th Board Meeting. And so our office is now preparing and loading the financial budgets into the software to get that ready to go for next fiscal year. We're working on closing the books as of June 30th, so we can open fiscal year 18 and have everybody ready to go. We're also working on the collective process of advancing the payroll information from the current fiscal year into fiscal year 18 and getting that prepared and ready for our staff. As action items, we have five things on the agenda tonight. We have the monthly financials for April. These April financials are as compared to the five-year forecast. In showing the changes in the assumptions that were made and approved in the five-year forecast, we're moving on target with that as of right now. We have our April 13th and 27th Board Meeting Minutes, standard practice to bring those forward for approval. And then we have several donations from our community members. In addition to Mr. Bartz's donation, we would like to thank Vesmati Varashin, please forgive me for the pronunciation, and Venkata Hamarti. They gave a donation to Freedom Trail for $500. We have Girl Scout Troop 599, who gave iTunes gift cards for music for PE at Indian Springs Elementary. Kathy Way gave a donation for a horn to Orange High School, roughly $3,000. We are officially recognizing the Saratoma Club of Columbus, the donation that they presented at the previous Board Meeting. And we have Friends of the Delaware District Library donated $300 in books for each of the elementary schools. It'll be shared amongst the buildings. So thank you so much for all of those donations. We appreciate everybody's support for the district. We also have the annual renewal of our Meta Service Agreement. Previously, we, they were known as Truca. They are our IT site. They provide fiscal support for our financial software, support for our fiscal software. They provide co-op purchasing, and they provide support for our student information system or Power School. We have one after the fact that is coming to the Board as well. This is to meet our auditing standards and requirements. A purchase order was not put in prior to the invoicing for some AP testing materials. So we'll bring it to the Board as a special approval. The funds are available, and they were budgeted to pay for the test that we just missed, the purchase order was just missed. So we're going to get that taken care of. Are there any questions that you have for us?
Are there any changes to procedures that you're going to implement to make sure that that doesn't happen again? Because that seems like a rather large expenditure to check to get cut without a PL.
Well, the, the check didn't go out, the, just the purchase order's dated late. So it's dated after the invoicing date. So we make sure that we have the purchase order in place now before the check was issued. But it was a reminder to the staff that they need to make sure that those get in and they're double-checking and putting things in ahead of time. But otherwise, our procedures meet the auditing standards. We just missed this one. So it was a good conversation to have, and just a general reminder to make sure that they're following that procedure on a regular basis.
Any questions for Mrs. Hatfield? Thank you. Do we have any comments for our first comment session?
No, we do not.
Okay. With that, we're going to welcome Mr. Runyon and Mr. O'Sullivan and Mr. Gordon for an update on Berlin High School. By the way, before you speak, I believe I talked to Jeff earlier today that the renovations are at or under budget still for the Shanahan and this building here. So I appreciate them being diligent.
Ms. Era, good evening, everybody. I'm just going to do a real quick, quick review of what you've seen in the past and really what we're building at Berlin. And really, it's Bill's meeting tonight to talk about the construction process and where that's going. Again, just a quick reminder here on what we're, that's just not showing up on the screen. The fourth high school there at Berlin and the parking, the stadium layouts and that. What you're going to see is most of, most of the emphasis has been on the building and the surrounding parking lot and driveway areas. They are just now starting back up this past week on the football field and athletic field developments and that around there, and that'll be going on throughout the summer. So things are going well from that standpoint. And then on the plan, real quickly, the highlighted, the colored areas are the areas that really have changed from the orange and Liberty High School layouts. And some of those areas are really starting to take shape. Bill has a couple of pictures of those. These are the areas of collaboration and extended learning that we talked about with administration is one of the big changes. I'm very excited to see those spaces in the building. I think it's going to be a great asset for Berlin High School and for the staffs and students there as they move forward, and it gives you much more flexibility with how you're delivering your education. That's the biggest thing. And then some of the circulation in the academic area, coming from the office and athletic area, you'll notice a big difference there. The student stairs have been poured. There's a different direction just with those. And then the wideness of the corridor connecting back to the rest of the building, it's a big difference. And I think everybody will be pleased to see that when you take your tour later on this year. So that's all I'm going to say, and I'm going to give it to Bill here.
Bruce, can I ask you-
Oh, of course.
-a question first? What were, you said the changes are in purple?
Yeah, the, anything colored is the changes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah.
So anything in color?
Anything in color is a change that we made to Liberty and to Orange's plan, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, some of it is just moving around partitions or widening corridors or structural system. And again, the biggest change on the second floor, it's much like the academic wings on the first floor. You'll see when you go, the wonderful space that was added at the administrator's request for a bigger collaboration space that took part of the second story of the media center, that's turning out to be a great space. You're going to, I think you're all going to be very excited. And that was Mr. Rafe's idea, along with Mr. Wright and Mr. Meyer, since they lived in the buildings. That wasn't my idea. They pushed for it, and it's really going to come out nice.
Cost neutral.
Cost neutral. It's the cheapest space we'll ever build. How's that?
Perfect response.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. I'll walk us through the building as it stands right now. We'll start with an aerial, and this is, as it notes, April. It's different now than it shows in that picture, but it kind of gives you a feel for what it looks like from the air. We'll walk, tonight we'll walk from the north end, which is the bottom, to the south, which is the far opposite, and the top. Academic wings are the Y, excuse me. And then the back is gymnasium. In the center, that is filled in now, but that's commons area and, very good, Bruce, thank you. And auditorium off to that. Anyway, gives us a feel for where we're starting. We'll start on the very, Bruce, on the end of the academic wing. There we go, right there. That is pretty much what it looks like today. These are about a week old, these pictures, but the masonry exterior is going on. So it looks a lot like it's going to look when the building is done on these ends. If we turn just a little bit to the left from this corner, that's the academic wing on the right, and then, on the right side.
Yeah. Just say front entry, and we're all set.
And then walking back, yeah. Toward, toward the, the front entry where Bruce was with the curved roof, commons area, and then gym behind that. We'll step back right now. We'll step back into the academic area to the right and take a look inside. This is the furthest along section of the school right now. It's got Dr. Ward going, piping, heating piping, potable piping, and stud framing going on. So it's starting to look very much like a school. Even drywall is being hung as well. So this is the furthest along part of the project on this end, and it's pretty much going from north to south in general. But we'll talk more about that. I also wanted to step back and kind of strip it out. This is an older picture, but to talk for a second, there are so many things our district has done through the years to save money on our schools. And between the district's decisions and Fanning &amp; Howey's design efforts, I wanted to point one out in particular that has really paid dividends through the years. This is an academic wing, and we can see the masonry entrance. Those are entrances to the classrooms. The way it was designed, Fanning &amp; Howey set it up so that high wear areas, students would pass through those portals into the classrooms, areas that get bumped and harder to maintain, made out of masonry, and they wear better, easier to maintain, cheaper to maintain. Between those, for classroom walls, it's all stud framing, which is cheaper to install, quicker to install. So it helps schedule as well as cost. On the corridor side, damage is obviously a concern with drywall, but on the corridor side, there'll be lockers. In the classroom, there are areas that are not high use or high-volume areas. So it's worn and grained in our schools. This applies not only to the high schools, but to the middles as well as the elementaries. Another part of that, you see that the masonry does not go to the steel or to the deck. It allows all the previous picture work that we saw to pass above the walls, and it dramatically helps the costs of installing that material above these walls. So those two things, this is one floor. There are many areas in high school like this. There are three high schools like this. Every middle school, the new ones are built in this, in this way, and elementary's the same. So when you multiply the impact of these savings across our district, it's really significant. This is just one of the many things that have helped, really, for us to be a benchmark in our district for the cost of the schools.
A lot of this goes back sixteen, seventeen years ago. A lot of the driving force between a lot of these ideas was the Development Committee. Dave remembers a lot of those meetings where we fleshed a lot of this out, and it's just continued to be a success.
So I just want to take a second and talk about that, about one of the victories. Going outside, we're walking back now further to the south. This is the commons area, and you can vaguely see the auditorium stage through the, through the hole. It won't always be a hole. And then, again, quickly going to the outside of the auditorium. If we walk through that door to the right, we see the auditorium now is getting structure on top, but it was open when the picture was taken. We're standing on the stage now. We turn a little bit. Structure was being installed on the stage at that time. A little further south, we go to the main gymnasium where the slab has been poured. The mezzanine is in the distance. And then finally, the auxiliary gym where the slab has not been poured yet, but the roof is on. So that quickly gets us through, and it's progressing well by Gilbain's schedule. We're on schedule. But I wanted to take a second because we have the incredible opportunity and luxury to talk about where we are on this job relative to previous two schools. And we've got that data. And it's very interesting to look at that data versus where this job is right now. To do that, when Bruce, myself, and the structural engineer sat down at Liberty High School to first conceive the school from the very beginning, we knew we could not build the whole building out of masonry. There were not enough masons in town, and it would've taken way too long. And that schedule was much more compressed even than what we're doing right now. So in a nutshell, the blue area is structural steel, and the yellow is bearing masonry. Decisions made based on what made sense. To make a gym out of structural steel and infill with masonry doesn't make sense. You're kind of duplicating a lot of money. If the structure's there to hold the roof up, the masonry could do the same, so why use steel? Those kinds of decisions, same with the auditorium. So the answer about what to make steel and what to make mason kind of, kind of made sense and fell out the way it did. We tried very hard to make a very distinct, distinct line between the two and created with this design the ability for ironworkers to start the blue and take off, and for masons to start the yellow and take off, and treat it like two buildings simultaneously. It really helps the construction timeframe and cost overall. So that's the conception. What was interesting is each high school has been built differently, even within those constraints. And that's what I'd like to just quickly show and then tie this back. This is Liberty High School, started with the auxiliary gym, and then auditorium, and then commons area, main gym, the science area, administration, and then the academic wings, and finally the shop and to that side of the school. Basically, what they're saying is it's built from the inside out, and each trade kind of worked away from each other. Orange High School was similar, but not the same. Main gym, an academic wing was started early because that could be enclosed earlier, like we're seeing on Berlin right now. And then auditorium, commons area, auxiliary gym, science, and then academic, and then again, last was the engineering area. More or less from the inside out as well. What's interesting on Berlin, the CM Gilbain chose to start with the main gym, get an early academic wing going, but then do auxiliary gym, then stay with steel, another academic wing, science area, commons. And right now, the auditorium is just being, being worked on and topped out, and then finally, the, the engineering area. So that was built from outside in. And what I wanted to try to do was take the as-built schedules from Liberty and Orange, and I compare that to where we are right now to give some context to what the schedule means. So in doing that, it's interesting to see that the, the masonry bearing timeframe, Liberty was really pushed, and it was a little bit shorter overall, although there was an early package done with that winter weather. But the overall bearing masonry for Orange and for Berlin is very similar. That's the, the top bars, the orange and the yellow bars up top. I arbitrarily picked green for Berlin. I don't know if that's the color that you decided or not. See how that goes. But, so interesting, it started later, finished a little bit later, but the overall duration was about the same. Structural steel, duration for Liberty and Orange was about the same, but very different locations in the overall schedule. And on Berlin, steel went much longer, which on the surface, you would say, well, that's a problem. It took too long. But in that case, because the concrete, masonry, and steel were the same contractor, they could do things that separate contracts would not coordinate as well to do. So they would actually stop steel, do some masonry work, start the steel up again, and do some more masonry work. So it's a different overall timeframe. But what was particularly interesting is that with all that variance in the steel and a little bit in the masonry, when we got down to enclosure, which is what really, that's where the rubber meets the road, because when there's a roof on the building, that's when interiors can go, and you really start making progress. And there's got to be a certain amount of time from dry-in to finish. And if we compare the three schools, Liberty was a little bit later because it started later, but overall, the same duration to get dried in as Orange and as Berlin. Now, the crosshatch Berlin in the green is projected because we don't know yet, you know, we're not that far along in the, in the schedule. But you can see where tie, where a dry-in occurred, the completion date was right with it. So with earliest dry-in, Orange was the earliest finish. Liberty had the latest dry-in. It was the latest finish. And right now, the middle dry-in, let's call it for Berlin, will have, at this point, the middle finish. So I just thought it'd be interesting to look at it from a totally different standpoint, using our data and kind of validating the schedule and where it is right now relative to what we've seen before. And it does, it does pan out. So anyway, any, a long-winded way of saying, well, I'm scheduled. Any questions or anything?
Can you feel his excitement every time you talk?
This is great stuff.
I, I do have a question, and I don't know if you two would know, or if this would be for Jeff, but do we know what the status of the Piatt Road extension is? Because we see it on the map, but I don't, do we, do we know?
Or purpose, you want? We know that, we know that Delaware County had put up, put out for design services, but quite frankly, I can't tell you actively where they are in that process, if they've awarded design services or if they're actually doing it. I know that they, there's a lot of property acquisition they have to do and things like that still. So we have to reach back out to Delaware County this summer on some other things. We need to negotiate an easement with them for some communication conduit- We need to negotiate an easement with them for some communication conduit tied back into Cheshire, and we'll be talking about that. We know we won't be in their way with anything, but we'll probably get a better update at that, so we'll make sure Mr. Gordon knows that, can share that with the board, or we can share that in a later update.
Any new things around contingencies? Are we still good on our contingency dollars?
Yeah, we're doing very well, actually, on that.
What we do for a return on one of the contingencies through the construction?
We just talked about that this afternoon, so they're coming back to us in two weeks, at our next meeting, in two weeks, our next business meeting with them, and then Mr. Gordon has a takes report.
Good.
We look at the production being incremental, something now, something like.
Yeah. Great.
Good. Thanks, it's always good to see you guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Great to be here.
Any public participation session folks for number two?
No, there are none.
All right, we're going to now bring up the board action items. The first thing I'm going to do, though, is we're going to pull out action item C and have that go first, so if I could have a motion on board action item C, please.
I'll motion.
Have a second?
A second.
Any comments? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Obstain.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes. I'll present then the rest of the board action items, A, B, D, E, F, and G. Ask for a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
A second.
Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes. Mrs. Hatfield, if you'd present treasurer action items, please.
Yes, I would like to present treasurer action items, A through E, for approval, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes. Mr. Rafe, could you present superintendent action items, please?
Yes, sir. I'd like to present superintendent action items, A through G, for approval.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions?
I just have one question, because I see on here the new teachers, and then today we put out on social media that we're hiring teachers, so how many positions do we still have left? Do we know?
I'm going to say around a dozen.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Oh, we did, we did.
Oh, we did that, sorry. Well, how about the roll? Thank you.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes. I have one chief operations officer action item, please. Mr. Meyer?
Yes, I'd like to present action item 14-1, approving the supplemental contract for Katherine Rafe as assistant cross-country coach at Berkshire Middle School.
Any comments, questions?
I, I was just wondering if she ever just likes to go home and relax at night?
He's never home, so.
Smile, that's it.
She won't have any kids at home.
Oh, that's true.
Easy to be working.
Can I have a motion, please? Careful.
I'll move.
Second.
Take the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes. With that, we've reached our, end of our agenda. We are going to go into executive session to, as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, to consider the employment of a public employee. We will only be coming back to this room to adjourn.